Good.
Good. Good. All right. I'll call this meeting to order. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the organizational meeting of the select board. It's why I'm opening the meeting. And the first order of business is to take nominations for select board chair.
Chairman, I would make a motion to appoint Skylar Swede as chairman of the Littleton Select Board.
Second.
All right. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Skylar, you're now the chairman.
Thank you. We also need to appoint a vice chairman. Are there any nominations?
Make a motion to, based on our current discussion, I'm not confused, make a motion to nominate Franco Rossi as vice chairman of the Littleton Select Board.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Karen.
Okay, Skylar, the target sits in the middle. So you have to move over here.
I prefer to stay right here. It's my first ruling.
Is this just for tonight or forever?
Forever.
Oh my goodness. He's reaching right next to him.
Well, when I started, Margie sat over here.
Okay.
So I want to go back to that tradition.
And Mr. Chairman, one other item under organization would be the setting of the date and time and place.
Okay, so we are currently meeting here in the Hill Room of the Community House on the second and fourth Mondays. Unless I hear something to sway me differently, I would like to continue that, but I'm open to suggestions.
No, I'm fine with the schedule.
Works for me. It's the best day for me.
Okay. So be it. Art, do we need a motion?
Probably, probably do one to be safe. Or just...
Can I have a motion? I'd move this. Recommendation.
Second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
It's unanimous. That schedule, for those that are listening and for Franco, will be reduced to one meeting a month in the summer, usually June, July, and August. But it really depends on what's on the plate, how much business there is. If there's a lot of business, then we'll meet twice. In the past, it hasn't been necessary.
So traditionally, would it be the second or the fourth? Must be the second.
The second would take place, the fourth would not. Again, unless we need to. Next on the agenda is the appointments, and there are none that I'm aware of. And so I'll turn it over to you, Andrew, for your town manager's report.
Okay. Just to give a town meeting wrap-up, the election results. Slukman, obviously, Franco Rossi for a three-year term. The trustee of trust funds, Stanley Fillion for a three-year term. Park commissioner, Danielle Cook for a three-year term. Library trustee, Joseph Evans, Janice Fillion, and Judith Dean for three-year terms. And library trustee for one-year term, Kim DeLucas. Also, with all the warrant articles at deliberative session, we had mentioned that if the budget and all the articles passed, there would be a 34 cent reduction in the tax rate. And some of the articles didn't pass. The community center didn't pass, and the library request didn't pass. So it further reduced the estimated tax reduction to 38 cents per thousand on the municipal tax rate. And again, that's an estimate.
Looking for five minutes and a tax rate's won't do.
You're here. You're just number one on the panel.
Good.
Next on the agenda is the cleanup day preparation, and Brian Glass is here, he's going to speak a little bit about that.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Eric.
You know, we were in discussion, Brian at the transfer station and Andrew and myself, when we had this idea surrounded around Earth Day. Earth Day is April 22nd, and it's a time when we feel we could take the opportunity for the town to come together and collaborate and do some cleanup of the streets and the parks, you know, surrounding areas that don't get much attention. We're going to have the Highway Department on board, transfer stations on board, Parks and Recs on board. I got, I reached out to local Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. I've got businesses, a few businesses, committed to coming up to the park and setting up for the day. We're also going to do a cookout for anyone that comes out and shows up. We're going to cook hot dogs, hamburgers, and things. And kind of make it into a celebration of cleaning up Littleton. We still don't have a name for it. I have to have a name by the end of this week. I've reached out to some area businesses to help out, but that's the general idea, surround around Earth Day and kind of us come together and clean up the town.
Do you need, question might be for both of you, action by the select board? Or is this just information?
I think it's more information and support we're looking for, and it could give you an opportunity to come out that day as well.
Well, I, for one, certainly support your efforts. I presume my colleagues do.
Seal, when Margie used to organize, was it around the same day? Was it Earth Day or, because she used to, as, she didn't ask the board to do it, but as a select person, she would volunteer to be part of, and she kind of coordinated that effort some years ago.
I know Tony Lockwood and I worked together once to do cleanup, but, you know, I know, like, Mike jumps on everything at our parks, but there's a few parks that he'd abuse that we can hit. But I know Earth Day falls in April, and it seemed like a good opportunity where they celebrate that nationally, that we could be a part of that program as well.
Ryan, would there be a backup day in case it's pouring outside?
No.
No?
We actually probably could think about that. We will think about that.
And we'll have a map and a sign-up list at the town office, and people can come in when they come to pick up bags and gloves and kind of instructions about what to watch for, like Sharps items. Then they can highlight the road or the park on the map so that you don't have too many people doing the same thing. And we'll have those available well before April 22nd. So we imagine what probably will happen is a lot of people are going to clean up prior, and then on the 22nd will be just the event and a place when people can drop off bags.
Yeah, it's more about giving a thank you, because they will be able to clean streets up leading up to the event, and then that day will hit the places that aren't highlighted on our map, basically.
Need to let the school know, I think students could gather community service hours by participating in that as well.
Yes, we already reached out to them.
If you could make a call to Greg Eastman, he will probably contact some of the industrial park tenants, if you will. And in the old days, they used to send their own crews out, because it's their part.
Their part.
So that might be a hope.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I know Greg's, I can touch base with him.
Yeah. Give him enough time to get ahold of them through an email or something, and you may bolster your cadre of people.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
So next on the agenda is board and committee vacancies. The applications and letters of interest are due March 31st, and as of right now, there are four three-year terms available for the Budget Committee, two three-year terms on the Conservation Commission, two three-year terms on the Energy Conservation Committee, and four three-year terms at the Opera House Management Commission. Three three-year terms for the Planning Board, and two three-year terms for the River District Redevelopment Commission. One three-year term for the Water and Light Commission, and two three-year terms, and one alternate three-year term for the Zoning Board. And so if anybody wants to put their name in, they need to send a letter of interest in before March 31st to Seal Stubbs at the Littleton Town Office. After they're received, we'll send the letters to the various committees and boards to review and make recommendation to the select board for appointment.
Some of those vacancies, just so you know, are created by people's terms expiring, and in some cases, but not all, they will wish to be elected for another term, which will be taken into consideration. So they're not all open in that there's no one to fill them. I'd say it's, might be 50/50, but I'm not sure of that yet. Some of these, chairman of these committees are checking with their people with expiring terms to see what their wishes are. More to come.
Next, we have the new Highway Department hires. Recently, the town voted to create a new position. We advertised internally to, in anticipation of if the article passed, and we had an internal candidate who was a seasonal employee that has been really effective. So we've gone through the process, and he'll be coming on board shortly as a new full-time employee for the town. And just looking for his name right here. Jeffrey Osgood. So we're excited to have him as a hard worker. Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Building. Really with that, we just wanted to let you know that the article did pass. We were already in process from the previous article from 2015, and have engaged an architect, and we'll begin a public process starting next month. The architect is going to be meeting with the Recreation Commissioners first, and then we're going to enter into this public meeting on April 26th at the Opera House. And we'll have a lot more promotional material and try to get a lot of participation. It'll be a really important meeting, because it's a time when Littleton's residents can get out and really have input on what the future of the parks and its programs will look like. So, again, April 26th at the Opera House, and look for more information. I don't know if you have anything to add, Ryan?
I actually reached out to the commissioners and gave them some dates for next week to meet with the architect, so I'll be helping to meet with them next year. I think that might be the best part of the talk, though.
All right, thank you. Let's see. And the Opera House, I was anticipating to have official award notice for the board to accept the grant funds. There was a grant that we were notified that the Energy Committee had received for improvements to the Opera House, which is about $20,000, which was about half of the amount needed to do the improvements at the Opera House. So when we have that, I thought we'd have it for this meeting, but we don't have it yet.
Okay, anything else, Andrew?
Nothing else specifically under my report.
Okay, we're moving to other business, and the first item there is Mount Eustis Road. The Mount Eustis Road issue was an issue prior to town meeting day, and it came to the forefront more with the Article Two for the zoning change. The butters and the neighbors brought it up, and it basically intensified what was an existing issue. I can tell you, at this stage of the game, the highway superintendent, the police chief, and the town manager are into the issue, I think, up to their ears anyway. And in looking at usage, and what kind of usage, and the vehicles, and what kind of vehicles are using it. So I expect that there will be a recommendation for the select board in the relatively near future. The point in bringing it up is, we're aware of it, we're working on it.
Do you want anything, Chief, in our process of our...
Well, I, we'll be reviewing the use of that road during our Highway Safety Meeting. The town has a Highway Safety Committee, the town manager, fire chief, public works director, and myself, just to review some of the comments that we had heard and kind of analyze the situation that we do have with that road. We know that there are some safety issues as well as maintenance.
Last year, we attempted to, the Public Works Department attempted to clear, do some roadside clearing to open up for visibility, but that's probably nowhere near enough, so we'll have a recommendation soon.
Secondly, and Andrew touched on it in his report, with the defeat of a couple of those warrant articles, the estimated, and I repeat, estimated, tax rate reduction is now 38 cents per thousand. That's our best guess at this, at this point, which is good news. Under Old Business, we, I see a Callex invoice. Can you help me there?
Yeah. So the town has its ambulance services contracted to a private provider, Callex Ambulance, and when we renegotiated the new contract, we were able to pull out certain costs. And one of the costs that we review annually is the, their usage of our dispatch services. So part of the way that the contract is built and enabled to keep the price down, they're able to use our facility as a base to respond to emergencies in other communities. For example, they have a contract with Easton, and I believe also Franconia, and they'll also provide backup to Bethlehem. So this is just kind of an FYI, that, you know, the contract is working, we're able to bill them for $5,300 worth of dispatch fees for 2016, and that's going out this week.
How is that, what is that based on? How do we bill it?
So the way we bill it is, we'll, we take our annual dispatch fee, for example, about 170 grand. We take the total of all calls, which is about 17,000 calls. We do a local reduction, which we estimate high to just be conservative for Callex's benefit. Our local calls are ones that are handled locally by our local dispatch, and that's about 6,000 is what we estimate it to be. So we, we had an estimate of, estimated total billable calls of just over 11,000. When you do the breakdown, it comes out to about 15, 30 per call. And then just looked at the number of calls that they have. I get a report from, from Grafton County Dispatch, they had 2016, 280 transfers, which are a private, you know, contract they will have with a hospital or an insurer. They had 30 calls to Easton, 31 to Sugar Hill, six to Bethlehem, and these are EMS-only calls, so coming out 347. And then if you divide, do the division, you come out to, you know, it's around $5,300.
Okay.
And then we just look at that annually for the period of the contract and bill. There's other billables in there too, but they're really kind of de minimis compared to the rest of it. You know, they, they help contribute to some of the, some of the things that are used at the station.
Yeah. So we actually invoice them, they don't just reduce their agreement amount, or...
Yeah, to keep the, to keep the budget more accurate, we do that, so it shows up as a revenue, and the expense shows up as a expenditure.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is new business, and to my knowledge, there is none.
I do have one item, Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is for our next meeting, but I wanted to give you a packet. This is an ordinance, I'm going to ask that you review, and then I'll try to answer your questions. So we'll have this on the agenda for next, next time.
Yes.
And I will have a health officer's report up for the next agenda as well. I'll tie it to this.
Okay. Anything else under new business?
I don't have anything else. I don't have anything further.
Okay. So we're into the public comment period. Is there anyone who has any public comment? Ralph, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I get just a couple of quick questions. On the Opera House, if for some reason that, that rebate doesn't come in, or that fund doesn't come into fund, does that null and void that vote on that article? So if the vote then becomes a no? Because that was part of the article, correct? It said that it would be...
Um, I'd have to review the language. I can take a look at that and get back to you.
Okay, I'm just curious how that, I'm just curious how that works, that if we don't get that money, what happens to that $3,200 that was, the whole telephone was going to call?
You're right. I think the article was amended to be reduced by the amount of the grant funds.
Right.
So if, if for some reason the grant funds didn't come in, then the group, the project would only have the amount that was allocated by that one article, which would be reduced by $10,000. So, you know, if it could happen or not, it would be dependent on a big time of the funds.
Okay, I was just curious how that works on that.
To grant dry it up, you can only do the other half.
Okay, which would not accomplish the goal of what we're seeking. Okay. The other question I got is, on Mount Eustis Road, the part of the road that you're talking about, is that the part that goes up over the hill and down by Dodge? Or is it the part that goes from Dodge out into Lisbo? What, what part is the one, the bad area?
Do you want to speak to the, some of the traffic issues that we've...
Well, I can't speak to the mainest part, but I can tell you that the road design was not, it wasn't designed to take the heavy truck traffic, and it's just not wide enough, which both creates a problem for two-way vehicles, there are speed issues there, and also you have that trains and stuff, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay, but that's the part that goes from like Dodge's construction out the other direction?
It's whole sides.
Whole sides.
We've had, we've had trucks...
Will trucks go back up over that mountain?
They go both ways, because Google and all these other mapping, internet mapping services try to shortcut the trucks to the industrial park. And, and so they tend to use that route.
Okay, so you're looking at the whole mouth from, say, where Amunucic Medical is all the way up to Littleton.
Yes, sir, yes.
Yeah, and there's, there's another portion of that that is used as a shortcut by, by people going to and from work, and that's Mount Eustis Road and Seer Road.
Right.
People go to, go and, coming back and forth to Bethlehem that way, which creates more usage, more trouble, more wear and tear. And if it's inappropriate vehicles, that much more dangerous. So some of it's not coming from Amunucic Community Health up the hill, some of it's coming off of Seer and joining Mount Eustis Road, basically in the middle.
So it's actually, it's been both the rest, it's the whole road, the whole complete road needs to be...
It is, and that's what they're looking at.
All right, okay, thank you.
And Rudy?
Yes. If I understand correctly, Chairman Abratz is going to resign as a chairman?
I did.
He did.
You did?
Yeah, we reorganize every year. I just happen to be lucky enough to have this two years in a row. And I say that with a smile.
So you are, you are not a fidel.
Yeah, but we reorganize every year, or supposed to every year, yeah.
I can't remember, nobody, nobody mentioned, it wasn't on the paper and nothing?
It's, it's a normal rotation. All select boards go through this in the state.
You mean you were chairman for three years, and now it's...
Uh, one year. I must, only supposed to be doing one year, but I did two years.
You did a year and a half.
Yeah.
Two and a half years, no, two years. Two and a half years.
Well, Margie resigned in October.
Right.
Yeah.
So he did a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then Swede, the new chairman?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But anyway, oh. And I'm questioning the Raffiaski. You basically tried to tell me you're going to have an estimated tax reduction on Mon Dos, because of the traffic? Because of traffic, you're going to have, you're going to take up a redundant taxation?
No.
That's what I'm saying. It's 2017, estimated tax reduction, right?
It has nothing to do with the road.
What is it? You do want to explain?
Do I want to explain the tax reduction?
Yeah.
Because of the budget and the warrant articles, there's going to be a tax reduction.
On a particular subject, on a, on a road over there, Mon Dos, or it's a whole other, where are you going to have a tax reduction? For everybody, for all citizens?
Your property taxes is, is per thousand dollars of evaluation. It's going to be reduced by 38 cents per thousand.
Estimated. All right.
Spending came in a little more this year.
No, the way it's written, it's kind of, you know what I mean? Look at the way it's written, it's not, yeah. Did you see after the old business, sorry, I mean, now the business, the way it's written under that?
Under Old Business, there's two separate items that have nothing to do with each other.
Okay. May I ask you, the new chairman, and then, you know, if you like, I would like to know, I also would be, I'd like to know, if you have an intention to lay out the tax reform for the citizen now that the elections are over? And, you know, where you're going to spend the money, and stuff like that, are you going to talk about, or you just proceeded to spend, you know, without anybody knowing about? Do you going to have a tax reform?
Am I going to what?
If you're going to have a tax reform about the money, you know, about the taxation, if you, if you telling the people where you're going to spend your money, the citizen a little time?
The money is going to be spent according to the budget that they passed.
I understand that. Do you going to, you know, you going to implement the thing to put them on paper, stuff like that?
Remember, Rudy, once a month, we get a report from Karen?
Yeah.
That's the report where we update where the budget's at in terms of spending. Revenue's received and then what we've spent. So every month, when she comes in, and we go over that, that budget, that's a monthly expenditure report, really, just shows what we've spent. So, you know, that...
It's, it's the individual, they got to go to the town.
No, 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 we do it here, though. But we do it here.
You're going to bring them over here?
We do it, we, we've always done that. Remember when Karen comes every once a month?
I'm sorry, I entered the year.
Well, but she comes during, once a month usually, and she, the second, I think it's the second meeting of the month, and she walks through the expenditures for the prior month, you know, up, up that year-to-date, whether it's the first month or the seventh month or whatever. So we've always done that. It's not a real exciting report, but at least it gives you some indication where the, where the spending's at.
And do you have an intention, you know, that when somebody in the crowd, he asks you a question, you're going to answer instead, and say, okay, we're going to take up a stop later? I mean, are you going to have an open assessment of what the people, you know, ask you for, instead of say, okay, you know, I'll let you know next week, or next meeting, and stuff like that?
Depends on the question. If we can answer it, we will. If we can't, we won't.
Yeah, I just, it's, I would like, you know, now that we have a new self-man, a new chairman, it probably, you know, we can have a better cooperation.
But, but the policy, right. The policy we, we passed in terms of how we run these meetings, that stays the same. Nothing, nothing's changed there. With that policy that we all signed off on a year ago, that still is operating.
Well, things have changed, you know that, right?
You know, this hasn't, though. This, this will stay the same.
I just want to bring this to your attention and stuff like that. I got a letter from a day inside sources up in Concord, right? I called about, you know, the, the election, okay? You know, it's, and this is not a letter to accuse anybody, to note that, it's just something that come out on the internet. And today we're talking about, you know, a look into the border fraud election in New Hampshire. That's the story, okay? It's known. Do you guys know about, you know, that?
Yeah, the President...
New Hampshire was in the list of, you know, one of the state, which in the machine they don't work properly and stuff like that, you know, that, you know, it's just over here.
President of the United States accused New Hampshire of, of, uh, cheating on the election, or the election was rigged.
Amen?
So you may want to talk to him.
Talk to him?
Yeah, I would send him a, you know, he, because he can send you some more information. But that's what that's about. That's about, you know, the, the accusation that somehow our election process...
They mentioned, they mentioned in New Hampshire.
New Hampshire, right.
That's, that's, uh, that's what makes people, you know, think a little bit, just stuff like that.
Yeah.
I'm glad that you know about that, that's what I'm, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment, questions, concerns? Being none?
We have a, we have a non-public item? We're checked.
We had one, but we don't, we don't, I think, we determined we're going to have something for the next meeting, isn't that right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
We have nothing, no further public action, no non-public. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I saw move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Short nice.